Following section, there are a group that talks about building standards. And there you get into building height, building coverage. Some of the zoning districts have impervious surface as well. Under residential, you might find some maximum areas for garages. So that garage is going to become dominant over the house. And then typically in residential, you'll also see a mutation on the number of accessory dwelling. I'm sorry, accessory detached building. Okay? So that's kind of the lay of the land. And you know, this has been the second time that you've kind of looked at this. Now there are the graphics. Any questions about that in general? If not, there's a policy question and we'll just dive right into it in terms of. Okay, I'm looking at page C6. And the issue here is where do you put the parking on the parcel? So under the section entitled other, maximum onsite parking in front of the principal building. That's one way of bringing the building forward and not pushing the building back and having all the parking in front. Typically stripped development. So the intent is to, you know, try and bring the building forward a little bit. Make parking a little less dominant. And what we're proposing for the highway commercial and also the B5, the mixed use commercial, is to say that no more than 35% of the total parking that's required is in front of the building. And that is 25% for the mixed use commercial. And this is brand new. So whenever we have something brand new, there's always, well, do we want to go that far? Do we want to have it in, you know, first place? Are the numbers right? How are people going to take this? Is this kind of direction that we wanted to go?
What is the 35 based on?
It's basically 35% of the parking area. 25% of the parking area can be in front. Everything else has to be on the sides or in the back.
And the rationale behind that number is just so that to limit it in the front?
Yep.
So our Walgreens, how was that, that ratio would you suspect?
I would say that one is probably 70% in the front yard and maybe 30% in the side or rear yard. And that's a corner lot, so it gets a little more difficult.
Yes, yep.
But if you say your primary is the East Street side, I would say 70% is probably on the East Street, between the building and East Street. And then there may be some between the building and other. So that would not comply with that. I'm trying to think of some buildings in town that would meet this standard. Where you've got?
This one would.
Well, yeah.
I would say, you know, the vast majority of everything south of the expressway would not currently comply. And that's the issue that you're trying to address.
Right.
Right? So the buildings are front and parking's in the back. So you're seeing the nice buildings and not a field of cars.
Yeah, on average, it's not something that is difficult to comply with. The average site designer can make it work. It's just most, the tradition for decades now has been you want the parking in front so that you can see that you're busy. So that when people, I guess, that's why they did it. But so if you have 10 people in your parking lot, you can see all 10 cars are there. So you think it's a successful business. The argument I've heard in.
The old, but it would comply, right? That was, that's one of the buildings masked in the front actually, which is now, you know, the Toledo's, I guess.
Right, yep, something like that, yeah. Or like Marshfield Clinic in the business park. You drive by and you see the building and that they actually landscape things from the parking lot. So you don't even really see the parking lot from state highway. But then across the street is Aspiris, which, yeah, so that's the vast majority in front. So it's definitely, that's the question. As a planner, I love it. I think it's great because I don't like a huge parking lot in front of a building. Obviously, when you get into something like Walmart, it's usually an uphill battle because they really don't like this concept. But so, it's going to be a policy decision that's going to give local and developers heartburn when they see it.
So is it intended then for the storefront to be on the street side? Because generally the storefront where people are going to enter and exit are going to be directly off the parking lot.
You would still have entry off the front ideally because you'll still have some parking there. And then off to the side, you would just go around the corner to enter. It's not like, the intent is not that most of the time it's not going to push the parking to behind the building. It's going to push it usually onto the side if possible. With really your customer parking in front and then maybe your employees are parking to the side or to the rear.
Okay, because I can see where, you know, for security reasons and that a commercial business isn't going to want to have multiple entrances for customers. And they're going to want that entrance convenient for their customers. So it'll be as close as possible to the parking area. If you look at Costco, right? They've got one corner entrance and they've got parking on both sides. And people just walk to that entrance and that's the way it is.
And the newer style Walgreens are all that way. Because they've got these standards in many spaces.
Walgreens, he has both.
Okay, but use the same criteria for a Home Depot, okay? Now you only got 35% of your cars in the front of the building. Everybody else has got to park a mile away to bring out their stuff, you know?
So then they would file variance generally or is there no hardship there?
Yeah, no, we don't want to go through our own variances, right?
Because there is no hardship. There's convenience, but there's nothing that prevents you from complying with it.
So the Home Depot would probably design it more like, what is it, the American? Where it's, the building is designed sideways? So then the 35% in the front, you know, the parking is on that side where the building, you know what I mean? They, they face it up, you know, sideways to the main highway.
Yeah, I guess you could, is Home Depot addressed off of, I think it's addressed off of County.
Street, or is it off of County?
Access itself, 24th.
But all the, let's take the outlets there. That would, I think, thinking about new development, that would fit nicely. But the other big boxes is really the difficulty. Unless they've got, I mean, existing store footprint that has worked somewhere else that's complied with something like this, right?
At their point being that if technically a Home Depot was addressed off of State Highway 54.
It's up at 24th.
Then really that layout almost works because it's oriented to the side. The majority of the parking is technically to the side of the building. So it's still, from a customer perspective, you're pulling in and it feels like it's still in front because you're still looking at the front door. But from the main street, if there wasn't, if there wasn't a corner lot, it would meet the requirements with this.
If, if Home Depot were the second, if, if there were another store where Home Depot is and Home Depot was immediately behind it, that would pose a different problem, right? Because, you know, right now it's, it's highly visible as you drive by on County W. The address is on 24th Avenue. So the parking is all on the side, but if, if you didn't have that corner layout.
You know, and with the Tractor Supplies and Home Depots and stuff, they use their parking lot for display, right? You know, right? So, so that's, you know, not really apples to apples compared to mostly what we're talking about, but.
And some, some businesses have larger need for loading docks and things like that. So where do those go? You know, so, I mean, yeah, it does pose some logistical requirements that, that would have to be dealt with. The real question from a policy standpoint is, is it valuable enough to start changing the, you know, the aesthetic, the vibe, if you will, of Eighth Street and other areas of Rapids? To bring those problems to the ordinance? Because there will be some. So that's really your decision is, is it valuable enough?
And then if yes, then we can talk about the metrics. We can talk about, you know, odd circumstances and things like that. But as Charlie mentioned, the first thing is, does it make sense? Yes or no? And then we can work on details.
And so with our commercial developments too, they don't have the same criteria as far as their, their main opening doesn't have to face the street address, is that correct?
Correct.
Like a house does.
Yeah, at least I didn't see it in here, so.
Possibly. But we'll get there. So the first question is, you know, just a big first step. Does it make sense? Do you want to have a standard like this, whatever the numeric is? My knee jerk reaction is that the different types of business, different types of businesses run so differently and have different needs and it'd be, I can be challenging to have it as a general rule. So we're, we're only talking about the B2, the highway commercial and the mixed use, right? I guess maybe one of my problems is I'm trying to picture like an Ace or, you know, some of the other stores that are along Eighth Street. How, how those could be laid out so that the building still fronts the street? And that it's reasonably convenient for their customers to use the front entrance? If they can't park in front of the building? I'm struggling with that.
I think it's the lot size and the building massing. It's hard to envision those old buildings being built differently, right?
Sure, that, that's, that's where I'm struggling.
You can't retrofit an Ace.
No, 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 no.
Our, our Ace to do that. But if it was a green build, basically what you end up doing is you really do, instead of having it along and paralleling the street, you end up putting the shorter end of the building nine times out of 10 facing the street. And then the parking.
It's on the side.
Yeah, so really it orients to the parking lot, but you still then have a facade that looks attractive to the road. And that's what you're seeing. So you're looking at the narrower end of the building versus the long way of the building. I guess that's how I think of it.
Yep.
You know, I see other businesses like, like the Domino's, although there's some extenuating circumstances there.
Tell me the story on that.
Right.
There's a, there's an easement. There's actually an underground river that runs through that parking lot. So they can't build any metal of it.
Right, even though it's parking, right?
Right, so that's what I'm getting at too. So there's extenuating circumstances there. But under this criteria, it's probably an unbuildable lot, right?
Well, then you'd have a necessary hardship. That is the definition of a necessary hardship. Probably in that instance, you know, wetlands or something like that, an easement.
It's unique to that lot.
Right.
And it's the ordinance that's making it unbuildable in a matter of speaking. So yeah, I think that would actually be one of those few situations where you'd say a variance is appropriate.
Right. The other, you know, strategy perhaps, you know, like we've done before is, is we set a hard and fast number. And then we say, well, there might be circumstances where we, where we might allow you to go higher with a special exception. And then that special exception process is basically a case by case analysis to say, does this make sense? It allows some flexibility, but it sets a, you know, basically a starting point and an upper end.
Because I can see quite a few on Eighth Street that do comply, but there are, the lot depth really makes a difference, right? I mean, that, that one, I think, but all the new build stuff that would be along 54, which isn't necessarily a good, the access there would be different, right? We would not allow access like we did on Eighth.
Right.
We can't on those state highways anymore, so. You know, I think that exception opportunity makes sense.
So just for example, for the, the B2, the standard is, is 35%. And then we can add a comma and say 50% with special exception or some number like that. Yeah, I think so. I think it'd be good to define some general characteristics of what would be a special exception. To give some guidance so that it doesn't just, well, then we should have just done a 50% then. Right. You know, probably the, you know, the factors that would be considered is going to be the lot size and lot configuration, access, things like that.
Sure.
I agree. Would you need a, a ratio or would you just, just lot sizes?
Basically what we do for special exceptions is to lay out a process and then to identify criteria or not criteria, but factors that the plan commission would consider on a case by case basis. So it wouldn't be anything hard and fast. It would just be something.
Limit the conversation at the plan commission and.
Right.
To be, to those.
And it would be a commission decision versus a staff decision. So it's easier to have that conversation and it's not just me saying, I don't feel like enforcing this today, so I'm going to allow you the 50%.
I like you or I don't like you. So lot area, depth to width, ratio, access. And there might be some other ones we'll throw in there, but.
You know, like a natural features or something like that. If it is us, we don't really have a lot of steep slope in this community, but steep slope outlines.
The other, you know, potential might be, you know, basically the, you know, surrounding land use system. Do the other adjoining lots have a similar or different kind of layout? That this might look a little, you know, funny, so.
This is exciting, come on.
That would be, that could potentially be a slippery slope though. Because if you're trying to get away from lots out in front and all of the other lots are out in front.
Do you ever actually.
Say, well, gosh, yeah, would you actually? Well, we're trying to. Yeah. Make it a little bit easier.
I think those, like, those exceptions is a, is a major compromise, but especially when it takes into account somebody identified pieces. I don't think we're too far off from reality there. When I read that at first and I appreciate the question, shame me because I was like, well, there's, what's 35? The arbitrary 35%? Why not 40, 45, you know, whatever that number is? I mean, in a legal sense, it makes sense.
Okay, so B2, 35% maximum, up to 50% with special exception. And then for mixed use, most of these are.
Going to be green.
Yes, larger parcels, you're actually stringing by smaller lots. So maybe the, the range for a special exception would be 45% or something like that.
Or it can go 50%, but.
Or is it, is the pressure there is much to even allow it? Or is the same idea applying that, I can see that the commercial stuff seems to, this is mixed use commercial.
Yeah, so that, currently that's basically Woodlands, Business Park, Aspire Stockers Clinic, where B5 exists currently. It's not a widespread district like B2.
And with the minimum lot, lot widths, lot sizes larger, you know, maybe 40% would be more appropriate for the.
35 would be the exact ratio that we went from 35 to 50 to.
Okay.
If there was.
So 25 to 35.
Yeah.
It's the same ratio. Mostly greenfield development anyway.
If we're looking for some kind of logic in numbers.
I like your thinking.
Fuzziest math.
Which one is that?
Yep, that's good. Mike can stand out, stand beside you.
Yeah, agreed.
Well, if I'm ever challenged on it, I just throw the commission under the bus and say they adopted it. I just have to enforce it. For the record.
This is for the record.
Hate these consultants.
The consultants are always the scapegoats.
Yes, yes.
We're comfortable in that position.
Okay, so anything else, you know, with regard to the dimensional standards? Lot of numbers, but what we tried to do was to, you know, to carry forward the existing standards, so, okay?
I think the graphics are really good.
Good.
To show people.
Help for it, yeah, yeah. So, so the graphics kind of work hand in hand between Appendix C and the building types. So somebody's going to come in, they're going to find out their zoning, they're going to make sure that the use is, is appropriate. And Adam can copy off a page of building type. You can copy off the zoning district. And between those, everything should be graphically, you know, pointed out in terms of what are the major features and, you know, major criteria or, or factors that go into the layout of the parcel. Does that kind of make sense? Okay, so now I'm looking at Article 7. And this is the first page with text and then we go into the different building types.
Start on the one, page 108.
Yep. So single family, again, kind of the same formatting, building setbacks, building height, coverage and then building elements. Just want to make sure that you're comfortable with some of these. Especially for the garage, the roof, materials, the foundation. So with a single family house, they have to build a two car or essentially a two car garage. The roof and the materials are intended to address the situation of manufactured housing. Without saying that. And same thing with the foundation. That's intended there to address manufactured housing, which doesn't have to be on a permanent foundation. Okay? And I'll just keep on running through these, a two family. Very similar to a single family in terms of the standards. A twin home. I do have, just correlating between the information in Article 7 and Appendix C. If someone wants to look up the value of a front yard setback requirements illustrated by a symbol A, I, I wonder if we should illustrate these instead of A, B, C? If we should do something different for the illustrations in Appendix C? Because if you, if you're looking for A and then you look at A and you say five acres, well, that isn't the setback. Front yard setback. I have to, you know, at a quick glance, it's. Yep, I understand. Okay, I'm not sure if I have the solution right now. That's fine. I'm not sure there is a good solution. I mean, that way, you know, sometimes you, you try to make things simpler, you make more confusion. Sure. By a different numbering system or. Yep. Why don't they start at A, they start at, you know, whatever? So, but yes, I understand.
Roman numerals.
Roman numerals, point one. Okay, twin home, on page 110. Townhouses. Each of the units are on individual lots. Multi-family, one lot, lots of units. Institutional. Have a generic drawing there. Could be a museum, it could be a church, it could be a school, it could be any number of things. Commercial. There we do say, under building elements, entrance to building, the front entrance must face the street or courtyard of sufficient size. I do have one other question. Okay. Would it be appropriate at all to include the type of zoning in parentheses? So single family dwelling? Maybe not so much for single and two family, but if someone's wondering what it, where does a twin home follow, fall? If they're, if they're going to jump directly to Appendix C? Is that a two family or is that multi-family? You know, what, what am I looking for for the late person? Probably the other, you know, component that could be, you know, copied and handed out is the copy of the land use matrix. That page that says, you know, multi-family. Yep. And then you can see all the districts and then you pull up the districts from the standard and then you get your building type. Okay. Okay, we were talking about entrance. Commercial, yes. And this kind of goes back to what was said earlier about having a side entrance to the building.
It could go on the side if there's a large enough.
Yeah, I guess what do you mean by courtyard? Courtyard being the parking area.
For the courtyard, I don't see many of these building types, but essentially a U shaped? Where people can walk down through the middle and then they can go to all the different businesses? Okay. Probably this can be rephrased a little bit. But essentially what we're trying to do is, is, you know, bring the building forward and have enough architectural, you know, features on the front to say that this is, you know, the building instead of the side of the building. And then still allow that side entrance.
Right, yeah. Almost the appearance of a front entrance.
Yep.
I don't know how you want to say that, but.
Yeah, basically windows along the front.
Yeah.
Canopies, windows and so on and so forth. Okay?
You know, just with your illustration here, I mean, this, certainly without a side entrance there. I mean, it just looks like it wasn't designed very well, right? I mean, who would want to park in one of these corner lot, corner spots and then have to walk all the way without a side entrance? You know, I can understand having a front entrance and entrance that faces the.
Yep.
But now you're telling businesses, now you need two pay stations too, right? Because you're not going to allow in and out without a.
Okay, so yeah, this graphic can be changed. They have that.
Match it to what's.
Yes.
So that it looks.
Like B2 zone.
Yeah, this really looks like a downtown business. Side parking lot.
Yep.
It happens that way and there's no way to be blessed.
So we'll have some parking in front. We'll have a corner entrance and then we'll have the rest of it, but allow for side entrance as long as the front is still architecturally compatible with the entrance. Does that work?
Thanks.
Yep. And then work live. There the entrance to the residential unit can be off the side or in the back or it could be off the front. But the business has to face the street. Industrial. Generic. Parking structure.
Go on, the, the bank key.
Okay? Okay, now, let's talk about the land use matrix. And, you know, probably set. And, you know, probably said this early on, that this is kind of a, an iterative process. You're making changes, you, you make small policy choices, and that sometimes affects, you know, everything else. So on, on the second or third reading, it's like, well, let's circle back and, and talk about some of these, and that's what Adam did. And so we're looking at the land use matrix. And his proposal, I guess, is shown in, in the blue. It was copied in blue. So we'll just kind of run down through these and just say yes or no, or something different, right? Okay, so, um, four point oh six, group daycare center. It would be permitted in the V one, which is downtown by right, and also the mixed use district by right.
And if it's any clarification, I think what you'll find is a lot of it is me going more permissive than originally outlined. And that's just, there's that concern of every use having to get a conditional use and the, just the time delay. And so what I tried to do is, is this a use that you traditionally have a concern with? Is it something where we're likely to get a complaint if it just pops up in that district? Or do I feel that with the bulk standards, the landscape, and everything else that we've incorporated in this code, that's really sufficient to make this use make sense in that district? That's just where I was coming from, and I'm not gonna take it personally.
And, 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 you know, I mean, that kind of goes to the fact that, yes, we're adding some new things with the overall intent of, you know, streamlining processes. Like we're doing conditional uses, they're not gonna be PC, as long as the house goes along with that. And having more uses, like Adam was saying, that are just permitted as long as you do everything else. So. Okay? Hospice care center. Permitted by right in the multi-family district. And same thing with a nursing home. The temporary residential shelter recommendation is to remove it from the R two district as a use.
I just, quite honestly, I don't see one ever getting approved by this council or any other council for a shelter in.
In a, in our, our district, right, R two.
Putting it where you have a higher density of residential, like a multi-family or a commercial district, I think is probably just.
Okay. Seven oh one, permitted by right in the industrial district. And then same thing with the truck trailer rental. Nine point oh seven, small rental equipment permitted by right in the V one. Downtown district.
And then where to promote, I mean, the concern of it is it's not gonna be a large operation most of, most likely is.
Oh, yeah, if you look at the definition, it's basically, it's gonna be something that you're carrying in. So it's not gonna be repair that would traditionally spill out into the parking lot or have things piled up outside. Now you fix a place where you want your toaster fixed, or your TV, or even your lawnmower, it can be lovely now.
Nine oh nine is a funeral home, permitted by right in the mixed use.
And that one I was unsure, I just know we have a funeral home in V five, whether or not we want it by right or conditional use, that's not exactly the most flashy of uses, but.
It's their visibility they want, right? I mean, that's what it comes down to, they wanna be in an area that.
Possibly enough, yes. No, why a funeral home needs to be visible, easy to find, I understand, but the visibility of a.
So, long range planning, if they're busier, then maybe you subconsciously wanna get your arrangements done there same time.
Top of mind awareness.
Yeah, right. Yes.
It's happening.
Okay, nine ten is that general repair permitted by right in the downtown area. And then conditional in the light industrial.
And it makes sense.
Okay, general services, conditional use in the V five.
Makes sense.
Healthcare center permitted by right in the B two. So, healthcare center is the term we're using for hospitals.
I'd rather see it as a conditional, from the standpoint of planning and facilitating location, you know, we've got it as a condition right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was kinda on the fence on that, I didn't.
I mean, it, it puts the council and commission, commission in a polit, quasi-political decision quite often, but it almost would for as it has, right? But it would almost force the site selector, those to be cognizant of what's the most appropriate. So I, I believe more so on the conditional side, I understand where you're going, that if that's the site they've identified.
Well, and a hospital isn't exactly someone who's gonna pop by on a Tuesday and wanna be opened up on Friday.
This is true.
So, yeah, their, uh, conditional use probably is not gonna be seen as a barrier to entry necessarily, and yet it would give us.
True, though.
Okay, so we're not making that change.
Makes sense.
Don't worry.
Okay. Next one is healthcare clinic, small doctor office, dentist, permitted by right downtown.
I think so, what do you guys think? The only downside is it takes a use from something else that could be more traffic, you know, first floor standpoint, but.
But a small clinic or dental office or something like that, I could see potentially downtown.
Makes sense, it's, yeah, is that the highest and best use, I think, is the question. So if you make them jump through that additional hoop of a conditional use or not. And ideally, I'd like to see those on a second floor or something like that in downtown.
And those, so people walk the steps.
Cause all of our buildings downtown have elevators.
Yeah, actually, that's a good point.
I was kidding. So, are we thinking we want to permit that? Because if it's, it promotes different activity.
I think it's one of those, you know, uses that are very similar to professional services office, people come and go, they're walking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're still bringing activity downtown, I guess, is. Most people may even do shopping or something else if they're down there, right?
And they're, they're for a short period of time, so there's a turnover, turnover, so. Um, nineteen point, all right, I'm sorry, nine point fourteen, conditional use in the mixed use.
What were instructional services in, like a university or a?
Uh, no, it would be like a gymnastics studio, or, you know, karate, or something like that.
I'm okay with.
Okay. Okay, next set is ten point oh three and oh four. Indoor entertainment and indoor recreation allowed by right downtown. Okay?
I'm just thinking of our downtown, and that's for downtown. Movie theaters, bars, and all those type of things, although bars are separate in here, but still.
Right. Yep. It's a same flavor. Eleven point oh one, administrative government center permitted by right downtown.
Could we go back to that?
Yep.
Indoor entertainment, so if it was, uh, say, a dance studio or similar dancing facilities.
Of the adult variety.
Are those, um, still considered under a bar, or is that?
No, that, well, adult uses are specifically pulled out and are only allowed in.
Nine oh two, it looks like, adult work to establishment.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so like, yeah, a V is would not be fall under indoor.
Okay. Yep.
Well, I think I, you bring up that point, since we have existing establishments that may not be in the most optimum location from a new, land use or a, um, you know, just new activity and things. Right now, they're conditioned, they would always be conditional, I'm assuming, um, but we've got them in conditional M one and M two.
Yep.
I'm surprised you didn't recommend, not, you were surprised, but when you think about like relocating, if we're gonna ever get somebody to relocate and they're not willing to go out of business or whatever, I'm almost thinking you'd carve out a conditional for as B, B two is general highway.
Yeah.
I mean, ideally, right? That's one thing, realistically, that if we're going to promote a relocation.
Well, realize that, that because of that very sensitive use, if you say it's a conditional use in B two and the council denies it, and it meets all the other requirement of an adult entertainment, I can almost guarantee that will be a lawsuit and most likely you're gonna lose.
Yeah.
So, by opening that door, you're, you're kind of.
City council at that point.
Open yourself up, plus the adult entertainment, if you remember, there's an entire chapter basically in the code for that, that has things like setbacks, uh, minimum separation distances.
Okay.
And a lot of those, even for a street, it wouldn't bore it, because it's a, I forget, a thousand feet from residential.
Correct.
So, unless you have a lot that's huge on B two, you're probably not even gonna be able to do a street even. So, I see where, what you're getting at on.
Is there any reality, is there any M one or M two that would even fit? Or have we, in fact, zoned them?
Well, we can legally zone them out completely.
Right.
So, yeah, uh, within the industrial park, there are technically spots. Likely.
So you don't wanna, you don't believe that we should open ourselves up to a B two conditional on those? I agree with the B one.
I guess I would be hesitant to, but.
It might be the, it might be, yeah.
I think we'd be probably one of the trend-setting municipalities in the state of Wisconsin if we allowed it in our general.
This is typically the solution for where you put them.
People from the industrial park.
Yep.
I'm just thinking, it, from a path of relocation, you say that these are your only options via conditional use, I'm fine right here, I'm never gonna move, yeah. And then we have to.
It, it does happen.
I don't know, do you have any thoughts? I mean, that's the conundrum, it's like.
I would, it seems weird that like. Your only option is two industrial parks in the city here, I mean, like, if you think geographically where our industrial parks are, nobody's gonna take and wanna go, right?
Or they, they leave the city.
Or their investment, right, yeah.
Right.
Well, and that's where my, my was going, until the one on fifty-four opened and closed, there wasn't a zoning prohibition, I don't think for them, that's in the town Grand Rapids, so they were allowed to be there. But they've retro, or they've now adopted an ordinance. I just remember, I'm just, yeah, but I think like you said, it's, you send them out of town then at that point. Which if that's, I don't wanna take us down the rabbit hole, but it's front and center for when we think about relocation, so.
Well, I, whether or not it would ever happen, but if that situation truly comes up and there is a desire, we think we have a spot situated for them, you can go back and you can change the ordinance.
Sure.
And I guess that would be, if ever, it would be when we actually have that situation before us versus hypothetical, just because of that type of use, and I knowing how they like to litigate. So if you open that door any more than absolutely necessary, it can backfire.
Sure.
I mean, I think nine out of ten.
Res zoning, right, they just rezone their property to.
They could.
Okay. So, page eighty-three, civic use facility. And, and as part of this discussion here, um, you also have to think about worship facilities. Okay, because there's a federal law that basically says you can't treat churches, synagogues, any different than other kinds of civic uses like it. So.
Their, their conditional use seems like it'd be appropriate.
Okay, so that's why eleven, so eleven point oh four and eleven fourteen are the same.
Very similar.
That's why a worship facility is permitted in B two.
Correct.
Because forcing a civic use facility would be permitted in B two.
Correct. So, in eleven oh four, if you wanna make it a permitted use in the downtown area, then you would have to do the same thing probably for churches. I, I, I mean, I think their conditional use is, is fine.
So then the civic use facility has to remain as.
Condition, as conditional in the downtown. Is that?
That works.
Okay.
And rereading it, that probably makes sense, cause it's a really larger uses, which are not always gonna be a good fit for downtown.
What about popping back up then to eleven oh one?
Like a social security office or something like that? Yeah, I, I think that's more administrative.
That'd be like a courthouse if it not.
Yes.
Courthouse, city hall.
Yep, I was just comparing the two civic use facility to administrative center.
A courthouse is different than a church. And this is like the community priorities that we're talking here.
Serving the entire population.
When it's on Monday through Friday, it's a continuous.
Right. Use. Yeah, I think, I think permitted downtown is, is reasonable, okay? Ten, maintenance garage permitted by right in the light industrial.
I think that's.
Okay, and then recreational trail, um, permitted by right. Sometimes when you have a linear trail, sometimes neighbors like it, sometimes they don't.
I just wanted to be able to tell the neighbors they have.
And I.
But, well, I, actually, I think that's a good point, though, is it, is it, whenever you have a, a request, typically, when you have a request, the only people that show up are the naysayers, and, you know, generally, the, the elected officials in the room tend to be compassionate to those who are there, and it can make these types of projects non-starters.
Right.
Despite it being community-supported and.
Right.
And I, I guess, and the other thing is, I don't expect a developer to come in and say, I wanna put in a recreational trail.
It's gonna be you guys.
Right, it's gonna be us requesting it, so do we wanna put an extra hurdle in for us to put in recreational trail?
All right, and that very typical story, the, you know, ninety, ninety-eight point five percent of them were opposed to it, three years later, fifty-six point five percent of them asked for a gate, right? So they could use it.
Access.
Sure.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's not my backyard until it is.
And then it's pretty cool.
Not like it though.
Yeah.
Got a corner store next door. Worship facility, conditional use in the B two. And again, that goes back to the earlier comment, so I think we can't do that necessarily.
Okay.
Okay, um, airport, conditional use in the M one, M two, so.
And, and that's only because I didn't know what we honestly want our airport to be zoned, just because if you start looking at trying to get business or uses that can take advantage of being near an airport, whether or not you wanna have that flexibility. I, I don't know if you zone the entire airport industrial or not, but you look at like an Appleton Airport where they've got repair and industry wants to be there because it's by the airport, so I didn't know if we wanted that flexibility. That's why I threw it up.
That makes sense to me.
I don't think we're gonna establish a brand-new airport in town and put in industrial park, is that what I'm getting at, it's more of, I guess.
Principle, right. Okay, so, um, seventeen oh one and oh two, um, these were kind of added midway through the process, and that's why these are all new, so to speak. So, just, just real quickly, accessory buildings include gazebos, sheds, cool houses, garages, and, you know, those kind of secondary kind of uses. So permitted.
Is that common?
A, a non-residential accessory building? Sure, I mean, if, if you.
Help, define it formally.
Okay. They have a church and they, and then they've got a garage for their lawnmower equipment and their gasoline, and it's kind of a secondary building.
Okay.
You know, schools, they typically have a storage building, you've got lawnmower equipment.
And that other use is gonna have to be there first, cause again, you're not gonna have just a, a church storing things in a garage, that's by itself.
You'd need to have the primary use.
Accessory use.
Okay. Sure.
For it to be an accessory, you're right.
Yeah, exactly.
Correct.
Seventeen eighteen, conditional in the V one.
It may be a stretch, I don't. It may be a stretch, I don't know. Just trying to think.
Well, you know, I mean, somebody.
Almost like a live-work type thing where they may be producing something and then selling it.
Or somebody's selling widgets and then people bring it back to get it fixed, so they've got a small area in the back where they're fixing, but it's still predominantly, you know, sales. Outdoor beverage and, I'm sorry, outdoor food and beverage service, and it all depends where these are located. Um, and that's why typically I, I put them as conditional uses, only because there's outdoor activity and you get into the hours of use and sometimes there's beer associated with the outdoor service and, you know, neighbors kinda get edgy.
So you could set conditions to make it fit.
Right. Yeah, I think that's, that's a good point.
And, and what the, what popped into my head is like, well, would it have made sense when Applebee's located, they have an outdoor patio? Why would they have had to go through a conditional use? I mean, but that's a locational thing, it makes sense there, there probably wouldn't be any specific conditions really, it would be, yeah.
No problem, right.
Double check it.
If it's a downtown area.
I see this being like the illuminated sign where, you know, we look at the, you know, and then there's like a set.
Almost standard, yeah.
Standard, okay, as long as, you know, so it's not special to each thing and we're not reinventing the wheel each time, but it is looked at, okay, does this, you know, make any sense?
Does it make a difference with the outdoor, um, food? Beverage, does it make any difference whether there's a fence around it like an Applebee's or if it's just open?
Oh, and that could be part of the condition, right?
Yeah.
If, if they're selling beer, alcohol, okay, that's when you see a fence, because you can't let the public enter into that area without going through the restaurant or the bar. If, if they're just serving food, then the patio sometimes is fenced, but not, people can come and go and it really doesn't matter. And with a liquor license, you have to, you know, that liquor license has to specify that outdoor services permitted.
Yeah, and describe that premises specifically.
So. What's your pleasure?
I, I think leave it as conditional use. I, I don't see an issue with adding the conditional use to B five.
Right.
Because I think we allowed restaurants.
Right. Yep. Okay, um, pond, permitted by right, industrial districts.
I was just more thinking if you had a large business and they wanted to.
Raise ducks.
Or more of. If it was a corporate headquarters and they won the look, and it's not really a functional store and water, I didn't really see a reason why we wouldn't allow a pond.
Yep, that makes sense. Uh, twenty-three, sales incidental to industrial use. The only thing I would say is it, it depends on what they're selling, in terms of how much traffic they're generating and, and where it's located relative to what are they driving next to to get there?
Is it inside of an industrial park? Is it on the edge? Is there a lot of traffic? So.
I can go either way on it. I, I'm just, I was thinking of like Mariani when they had their shop there. Was it that, I didn't think it was really an issue to have it there. It's a great way to, for a company get a local outlet for their goods and services.
A little pub even. It's like that, but different. You know.
I can see your point.
Furniture maker, mattress maker, they always, you know, produce stuff on site, but then they have a small area for retail.
I think it's something you wanna encourage, I just don't know if it is open in the floodgates as a outright permitted use.
You know, it, you know, um, I've, I've never heard of an issue.
Right, I was gonna say, is it, you know, the, the sales are gonna be secondary to the industrial use anyway. I, I wouldn't think there would be an issue.
Yeah.
The permit, it would be fine.
Okay. Okay, um, service walk-up window, um, again, similar to the outdoor area, location matters.
Nice.
You're batting nine hundred. That's pretty good.
I just want people out in a boat outside of buildings and are downtown in the commercial districts, not cuddling inside, but that's not always a good thing.
Like you said, location, I, it's a big difference.
Okay, so, as is. Okay, contractor's office, uh, okay, um, eighteen oh one and thereafter, these are temporary uses. So contractor's office permitted by rights as part of a downtown construction project.
I guess I didn't understand why it wouldn't be, because the use is gonna, yeah, as long as the use is there, I didn't see the need. I guess, I, I was trying to think of a situation where you'd wanna make them jump through to pull a trailer on site for a project.
Or just use a vacant office space, you know, if there's.
Okay, um, page eighteen oh two, um, earth material, stockpile, again, this is a temporary kind of situation, they're stripping, they got some good stuff, and I just, you know, originally, um, just didn't see the, the circumstance in the downtown area where that would happen.
And to me, it was just like the triangle, it's a, it's potentially a two-weeker site where you may have a situation where you would, I mean, yeah, on a small fiddling, you're probably not gonna have something that would qualify.
But it is temporary.
Yeah.
I don't see where it's an issue.
Okay. Um, farm stand off-site, not allowed in the R one. I agree.
Yeah, we just went through.
We just went through that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, eighteen eleven, seasonal product sales permitted by right in the B two.
Use script eighteen oh seven.
Oh, okay, eighteen oh seven, non-metallic mine, not allowed in the R one. Okay. Christmas tree sales, allowed in the B two district.
And again, that's just more of going with what has traditionally been allowed, I guess, is why that's there, whether or not the community wants that. But making them go through a, if it's truly seasonal and you have other restrictions on it, that's probably where you want it.
Okay. And then we're taking out of the matrix eighteen thirteen, um, special event, um, basically you've got elsewhere in your municipal code, talking about process and criteria.
Yeah, it's basically the special event process that goes before finance and the council now, at least that's how I read it, it's things like the grand affair would fall under that, um, the parades, the lake and ceremonies.
And we wanna retain that to go through that committee process?
Well, it doesn't matter, I guess, get rid of one or the other. I didn't, I don't see the point of making both your finance and planning commission for the same event.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it makes no sense for them to come to the planning commission if they're going through the financial property, but.
Seems like nine out of ten involves some sort of public property, which I think is why you've had it traditionally go through the council, because the zoning technically normally applies to the private. So I guess that's why. Unless I'm completely misunderstanding the special event.
Nope, nope, it could be a, a, um, road raise, a political rally on somebody's private property or public property, I mean, it could be any flavor of, you know, gatherings. So why would a minor special event be permitted everywhere then? Um, basically, um, well, we could take that out.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what that.
It, it's based on the number of people. Church. Yep, I mean, it could be, um, a, a small fundraiser for, you know, the kid down the block or whatever, and that's, if you're gonna close a street or do something for that too, you really need to go through proper finance, so I think that should be scratched as well.
Unless we're talking specifically just on private property.
Well, both of these could occur on private property.
It just, it gives you some standard for them to pass your buy by.
Since the minor not including road closures and then that's by.
Um, Madison.
Yeah.
Look back at the definition, but.
And it does not specifically state public versus private property. So I don't know, I guess we could even keep both in there if we just clarify that you only need to do this if it's only on.
Public property.
Or private property, if it involves public property and you're going through that special event process, then I think this is redundant.
We'll take a look at that drafting.
Yeah.
And if you wanna, or, I mean, I'll send you that code section just so you can see what it involves. I can do that.
So just real quickly, kind of recap, the possible solution is just to, um, make sure that the definition for both of these apply to public property.
Private.
I'm sorry, private, yes.
What about a conditional for that yard sale? I could see that it's.
I guess that would probably invite, there aren't many instances where somebody would have a yard sale.
I could see an auction.
Is that a separate? So that would be just.
An auction would be like a special event.
Okay. And probably a minor in that case if it doesn't involve.
Right.
Tree closures.
Between fifty and a hundred people, yeah, that's probably, it's gonna be a really big auction if you're getting more than that, probably. That's what a minor is, is between more than fifty but less than.
I was just thinking about the gap of the other land uses not allowing it.
So, yeah, um.
So your family Christmas gathering qualifies as a minor event.
Pretty close.
Better get you wrapped.
Yeah.
Good things. The player camp's not in the city.
So, what do you do?
It's not that bad.
Okay.
They're spreading it out, now they're gonna be there for five days in different groups.
Ah, okay.
Better.
Yay.
More family time. Oh, now my family lives here. Save that on public access and not see.
Someone said you may send them the Facebook link and it'll be out of the way. Okay, um, okay, now let's go back to the fifth page of the memo. There's just some policy, you know, questions. First question, minimum lot size currently included in the code, proposed code, is twenty acres for plan unit development. And thought is maybe reduce that. And PUDs are always a double-edged sword.
Yeah, when I saw that, I could see reducing it to less than twenty, but not five. To me, a, a five-acre PUD is just an attempt to get around the.
Right.
Zoning. But that's just my two cents.
Right. Madison, they will do a PUD on a single parcel for a single building. And that's how they do it.
But get rid of zoning.
Yes.
That's Madison.
That's Madison. And, and, and that in, in part is why there's a minimum of something, just to make sure that.
I mean, I could see less than twenty, certainly.
Well, and the Y, it's thirteen acres, is, I mean, that's a big chunk of property for the city to consider. Twenty acres, that's gonna be really rare, that's a season.
Yep.
Where you're never gonna use your PUD.
Yeah, eleven acres in the city of La Crosse is huge, it's a massive size, so, you know, I guess I would recommend that you consider ten.
I could see that.
Okay?
And again, that part sounds getting a lot of desire to use it for more than that, we can always change, but, yeah, I, I just thought twenty was way too big.
Um, now we're talking about variances, uh, there are two types, dimensional and use, and under state statutes, um, you have to, you know, consider somebody's application for a use variance if you don't otherwise prohibit it. And the question is, do you wanna say upfront, variances only apply to dimensional standards?
Yes. Personally, I would like to, because again, I think it's an end around on, rather than going through the zoning process and meeting that standard, trying to allow a use that wouldn't normally be there.
Sure.
Okay. It opens up your entire residential district to whatever use I feel like proposing today.
Right.
And knowing our zoning board.
It's gonna change.
Yeah.
Team members coming on board. It's always easier to train when it's more simply stated.
Right. Um, okay, now we get into a question about the zoning districts, um, we, we dropped some, we consolidated some, and the question is, does it make sense to have a neighborhood commercial district? So essentially, these are the existing B three parcels?
And we've got B three and B four, which are kind of a hodgepodge, but a lot of times they'll be that transitional areas. So my, when we were talking about the conference of plan and zoning map last time, we were talking about some of those corridors like Pepper or, uh, we had been discussing Baker, and if you have those that are, have been traditionally residential and they're gonna transition, if you're implying, if you're applying all the standards that you traditionally see in our highway commercial, they've got a larger lot size, bigger setbacks, basically means that you can't rezone any of those to a commercial district, because it's a hard, they don't meet the minimum requirements. So if that is truly something that we wanna allow in certain sections, having some sort of transitional, that's a smaller lot size, maybe similar setbacks to what a residential district would be, again, it may be less or more than what's resident, or what a true commercial district would be, and tightening up the uses, so maybe it's just basically your indoor service, indoor sales, indoor, you know, just more restrictive, so that it kinda serves as that, going from full-blown, whatever you want, commercial district and residential, so. Just something for discussion, deal with it either way, but, and I probably should have brought it up twelve months ago.
Yep, it's kind of a circular process.
Yeah. It was just something.
Well, I could see where it, it could be a reasonable fit in some of those areas. I guess the question is from a, from a planning perspective, though, in those areas, is that use desirable? And I have to, I'm not sure that it is.
I mean, you would still wanna only see them in areas where you're showing it as being commercial on your long-range plan. It's, I, I don't think it would be a district that would be permitted in a residential category on your conference plan.
Okay.
It's more, as you begin to transition from what it has traditionally been residential to commercial. Or you stick with B two and then that requires land assembly, so rather than going lot by lot by lot.
Right.
They have to acquire four homes, and there's advantages to that as well, because obviously you see situations on A Street or West Grand where that wasn't required and.
Right, and you've got some interesting businesses.
Yeah, it's definitely a policy question, I just thought.
Is this encompassing like neighborhood bars?
Well, it goes back to that list of, um, permitted uses by right or as a conditional use. So typically you wouldn't have bars within a transitional district like this, again, it's gonna be professional offices, small retail, um, things like that.
Yeah, no, real estate office, uh, insurance agent, kind of symbols, again, that we've seen on Pepper Avenue and.
Even West Grand.
Yeah, a little bit on West Grand. Yeah, I, to me, it's not for a neighborhood bar. But. Not that I don't love.
Okay, so what we'll do is, is we'll keep this on the plate, so to speak, and when we look at the, the final zoning map, that might help us kind of figure it out a little bit more in terms of actually where it might be located, so I think that would.
Keep it upfront so we don't forget it.
Yeah, and, and I think we need to be cognizant of how, if, if we wanna do a zone like that, how parking is gonna work. You know, what type of requirements there would need to be and, um, 'cause I can see some potential conflicts there, yeah.
Quite often, you know, um, if, if, if I'm envisioning what you're thinking about, it, it's typically homes that are being used for a commercial purpose, so they really don't have the opportunity for a new parking area, so it's primarily gonna be on-street parking. If you don't have on-street parking, then that kind of begs the question. So.
Depends on my mood on the day, I'm whether or not I wanna or not.
And for that very reason, I mean, that's why you would really restrict the uses and you wouldn't see bars and restaurants and things like that.
Yeah.
Which have a lot of parking demand.
A lot more service industry and, or really small, you know, so you might have two cars.
Okay.
Besides the person walking there, you know, but it's kind of in my mind. Aside from personal, you know, but it's kind of in my mind.
And I, and I think if, I think if that's defined, I think that would be then something to consider. And I think there's a few examples where there's, you know, they took the entire backyard and turned it into a parking lot, and not that that's a bad thing, but in a commercial area, yeah, that, that's okay, but still with a neighboring residential, it kind of detracts from the neighborhood atmosphere. So I think we just need to be cognizant of it.
You know, when we were looking at that place on Strawberry Lane two, which was, we were looking at a group home, when I, I guess I thought that definitely a more of a professional-type business was what belonged there, like a dentist or chiropractor or something like that, too. But, so, I guess I would like to make sure that, that some properties similar to that could still be, have some flexibility as far as falling into, into a a way that they could be used in that respect, rather than strictly residential.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Okay, number four, should a property owner be allowed to live in a RV during the construction of a new home?
I don't think not.
For three days.
I mean, you've got people living in them now, not that they're building a new home, but they're remodeling, I mean, even the next one, I think they're both, no.
So.
It's a question I've gotten in the past, that's why I raised it while I was reading in the code.
So, when I moved to Wisconsin Rapids ten years ago, I had my house up for sale in Grand Rapids, and they wanted to close in seven days. So, I didn't have a home to move to, right? So then I had to come in front of the variance board, I guess, and was able to live in a travel trailer while my Pittsville home was being built for four months, from January, July seventh to October eighth, I guess. But, um, that, I think it should be, if you're going to allow it, I think it should be in relation to having a building permit or something like that attached to it. The reason I was able to do it was, I said, well, um, Witrock, there's a church on Witrock and Sixteenth, they had three or four campers in the parking lot while, while out-of-town members of the same denomination were there remodeling the church. And it was, I don't know, it was a summer type, um, remodel, you know, it wasn't something that was a week or two, for sure. So, in my respect, I mean, certainly I, I'm biased, because that's what I used it for that. But when I look at what else could I do, if you're, you sold your home and all of a sudden, what am I gonna do now? I can't rent for two months, nobody wants to rent for two months, they will give you a six-month or one-year or two-year lease. So, um, I would like to see some flexibility in there, but.
So, I think the remo, I'm sorry.
I'm, so my, I'm trying to figure out the root of the concerns with RVs. I mean, obviously, we're trying to limit people from just living in RVs.
Right.
You know, and so, I mean, that, that is one concern. I mean, the other concerns are sanitation, you know, what's happening there, which is a hard thing to regulate, but is a public safety concern. But, you know, what else are things that are concerns? So that we can, you know, maybe think about things that, you know, could make a.
A, a building permit that is issued is good for two years, and it can be renewed for an additional, I think, six months. So, I mean, the duration obviously is, is very important. And, and basically, once something is there, it's always hard to get rid of it. You know, I mean, you know, you're going forward judge, and they're saying, this is where I live, judge, and they're being mean, and, you know, I have no place to go, and the judge is gonna be very sympathetic, you know, so.
Well, and, and along that line is, doesn't encourage someone to, if they're building their own house, that maybe they're not as motivated as they could be to complete the project, and it ends up dragging on to that full two years.
Well, I mean, I, I, I can't see where for a remodel, that it would ever be allowed. You can generally remodel it creatively to make sure that doesn't happen. I, I could see for a new construction, but if, if that were to be allowed to have a six-month limit, if it, you know, if you're gonna be building a house and it's gonna take more than six months, a year lease is not unreasonable then to rent somewhere to stay.
And I think seasonally, there's some restriction too, I mean, on, on that dynamic, not that people wouldn't live over the winter in an RV.
Does parcel size matter? I mean, larger parcels, you can, you know, have both, and it really doesn't matter, but on smaller parcels, it may be odd.
I could see after even ninety days, what was your length, four months?
It was four months, but, again, in my particular case, I mean, I didn't order the house until I had some type of commitment with the sale of it, you know, so.
Maybe six months is appropriate then.
You know, if it's accompanied with a, with a building permit.
Right, I think they have to be together.
Right.
Because right now, we have.
No extension, right, it's just a six-month, and that's it.
Temporary use, right.
That's right.
Enforcement nightmare.
Oh, it definitely is, but since you have a building permit, you have another hammer too. I mean, tightening up at six months, that takes away some of that hammer, but push comes to shove.
So six months with valid building permit? Again, does lot size matter?
I could see it go both ways, but I think it does.
Doesn't make sense to wherever in the, because we talked about where you could park these things, and I think it has to be where anybody could park it, so you don't get special.
Oh, yeah.
You don't get a special way to park a camper on your yard just because you're remodeling. You'd have to be able to normally store your.
Has to be on the hardened surface.
Not in the front yard, right.
Yeah, you know, so whatever, rules apply to everybody else, you can just go with it further.
Single-family district only?
I would think so, I, to me, it's owner-occupied, it's gonna be if you're, I mean, that's hard to regulate, but by keeping it to single-family, I think that helps.
And we, did we say a new construction only, or are we gonna encompass remodel? Just new construction, yeah.
Number five is, is if there's some kind of damage, fire damage.
No. That would be something where it's constant, I mean, the house is basically.
Fire damage or water damage, I don't think so.
A lot of times you have insur, if you have homeowners insurance, they should put you up.
Okay, so, question number four is yes, and five is no.
Correct.
Okay. Number six gets into who authorizes what. So currently, it's drafted that the plan commission can authorize more than one duplex or multifamily buildings on the same parcel. And the question was, should staff be able to do that?
Well, I, I think since it's defined where it's, where it can and can't happen, it's, it would be reasonable for staff to make that approval. I mean, essentially, it's a formula, or no?
Yeah, and, and that's why I suggested it, but the more I think about it, because our new code has things like site plan review and all that, so it's really gonna be coming before this board anyway, except for maybe duplexes. Duplexes normally would not.
Correct.
Like on a multifamily, it wouldn't really matter, you're gonna have to wait for a plan commission approval anyway. It's just, the duplex, I think, is maybe what stood out more, so if I wanna put two duplexes on a lot.
Even there, you know, placement of those duplexes on some parcel, I mean, it's, it's kind of the same issue, just a little bit smaller scale, but still placement matters and parking matters.
So, the more I think about it, the less I think that's probably a good idea, so keeping it with plan commission probably makes sense.
Okay. And we went through seven. Okay, what, what's not on the memo is another question that came up after I drafted this, so accessory dwelling units. They're, they're allowed as an accessory used to a single-family house, and the way the current code is drafted is that unit, that accessory unit has to be above the detached garage, and that's the only place where it would be allowed. The question is, would you allow a, a separate standalone accessory dwelling unit, kind of as an independent standalone building?
I, I've seen that work on larger lots. Yeah, where a, a guest house is built, and it's, you know, very nice, but they're on big lots.
Does it have all utilities, running water?
Yep, kitchen, it's, yep. It's a, a, a very small house, but it's, um, and I've seen it work very well, but again, it's on a big lot.
And I've also had people request it to be either attached to the existing home or above an attached garage or things like that, so, I mean, how restrictive or how permissive, I guess.
And we're gonna open this up to the whole tiny home craze, where people wanna live on their friend's land because they can get this tiny home.
Right, so essentially, an accessory dwelling unit is a permanent building, it can't be, you know, trailer and on and off, it has to be hooked up to water and sewer, so you can't have complos in the toilet, and you can't, you know, whatever. And, and, and there would be a minimum and maximum floor area, it can't be smaller than X square feet, and it can't be more than X.
Question is, within the corporate limits, do we have any particular subdivisions where that would even remotely be a possibility?
Well, it's those large lots, right? That's option.
May not be in a subdivision per se, but there are lots out there.
Okay, 'cause where I've seen them is like a lake home, someone's got a big lot on a lake, they, they, they build a, you know, they build a guest home.
Three-stove garage with a guest house on top.
Yeah.
So the question is, whether or not we wanna permit them at all, right?
That's the question.
Right now, it's drafted as.
Only above a detached.
Detached garage?
Or any garage.
Detached.
So do you wanna open it up to be built?
Standalone.
Standalone.
Maybe one, you know, option is to take baby steps?
Yeah.
And if. We've gotten questions about it before. Or is it just?
More so on an addition, that basically it's gonna operate as a mother and supporters, as what you're looking at. So there would probably be one connection between the existing single-family home and what they wanna put on, most likely gonna be a locking door, that you can't just walk through. But that's, here, I've never, at least that I can recall, gotten the question of someone wanting to do a traditional accessory dwelling unit above the garage.
If it's attached to the house, isn't that just an addition to the house and not an accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I honestly couldn't tell you if it was here or at the other, at my last position, but there, we had specific language in there that prevented you from having multiple standalone facilities and basically turning into what could potentially be a duplex or something like that. So that's why the question came up there.
So, um, along those lines, I was, I was turning to the land use matrix, because that's where everything starts, right? And I was looking to see, and I'm surprised we don't have it listed, is the situation where there's in-law unit. And, and there, that is, is a situation where mom and dad, dad live in a certain part, family lives in the rest, but they are part of the same structure. And there's not a separate entrance except up the back, so they, you know, basically, they come in the front door, and then they go their separate ways or whatever. So we could add that, and I'm surprised we didn't have that. So that would be an, an in-law dwelling unit.
Well, how would that technically be any different than a single-family residential?
Basically, it would be still a single family with a secondary accessory unit.
But I mean.
And it would be sold as that, it can't be rented out, it has to be mom and dad.
Right, so I mean, if, if I were to build a house, and I wanted to put two kitchens in, two master baths, I mean, what? It's, it's still just a single-family dwelling.
Right, but essentially, you know, the, the issue with in-law dwelling units is, what happens when mom and dad leave, okay? And property owners are like, oh.
It's a big house.
It's a big house, I'm just gonna rent it out, I'm not gonna tell anybody, and you've got a rental, you know.
You've got a duplex in a single-family zone, basically.
Right, that's the issue.
But if you rent a bedroom to a friend, you're doing the same thing, right?
It's probably a short term, but there's no separate kitchen.
Now we're diving into the weeds, and it all comes down to what is a household family unit, okay? If, if they're really independent, you know, family units, then they're, you know, separates, it's kind of like a rental situation.
Sure.
So, we're.
And, and renting to a friend is really unique, it's not something that happens fairly regularly, renting out a duplex happens every day, you know, so, I mean, from an administration standpoint, from an enforcement standpoint, that's the difference.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know, there's, there's, there's situations where friends will live in the same house.
Right.
But they don't have separate kitchens, they don't have.
They're not set up almost like, I mean, yeah, you still have a communal entrance, but for hunting purposes, you could live in that section all by yourself, and I have to see that other person.
Yeah, it's access, and it's the facilities that are.
Is it clear, no, it's definitely not a black and white.
Right.
Thing. If someone has way too much money and just wants to put in multiple.
So we'll do some drafting on the in-law unit, but the question is, for the detached accessory unit, right now, it's drafted as just above a garage, do we wanna change that to be standalone?
I don't think so, no.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's really anywhere here in the city where that would make sense, right?
Cool. Okay, um, next question, again, that's not on your memo, deals with non-metallic mines, so they're allowed as a temporary use.
They were till a few minutes ago, I thought.
What's that?
In residential.
Oh, right.
We just took it up.
What are we talking about?
See, it, um, yeah, I mean, somebody is, you know, pulling off topsoil, they're pulling out gravel, they're pulling out whatever, they've got a huge mound, they need to flatten it, whatever. So that would be a temporary kind of situation, they're pulling materials off, and as, as defined, it would allow that use to continue for five years, and then after that, it has to go away. So the issue, or the question is, should that be a five-year renewable option?
Or it's one time.
Yes, as drafted, you get five years.
Period. And I guess, my question was, if it's a full-blown, basically, quarry, which would technically be a non-metallic mine, or?
Yes, the city's pit.
City's pit, or we have, I guess, is it in the city? We have an existing quarry that's been there for decades, I mean, to put the time and money into establishing a true quarry, five years, I guess, they're probably not gonna do that.
That's, that's one of the early issues that we talked about, is do you wanna allow full-blown quarries? And I, I think at that time, you were saying no, because, you know, that's not the highest and best use, it's not compatible with a city building.
I guess if it had to remember that.
It just happens to be in the city, the one that's here.
Are, are you still using it, or?
Still active.
It's an active privately-owned quarry, milestone materials pit.
It's right on the edge, though, I feel like it was annexed maybe through the landfill or something, I mean, I don't know.
Could be.
It's kind of contiguous with some.
But if it's been there, it's operating legally, we're not gonna be able to say in five years from now, you're shutting down.
Well, like, the city and the county has substantial pieces of property with fill material.
But we didn't mine it, it would be different by definition in the sense that we're not, we're storing materials there, right? It's not a.
You're not digging for gravel, you're not mining anything.
That's true, right, you're not a different coconut shell.
Yeah, it's a stockpile.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's where I think I would, you know, the mine or the quarry or.
Is the excavation not?
But, you know, if somebody decides they discover something, they wanna mine it in the middle of town, or this is a district, yeah.
So they're digging a sand gars.
Right.
Yeah, so the question is not.
But yeah, so the question is not renewable.
The funny question is, is five years too long?
For truly trying to do something that is temporary versus a commercial operation that's doing it for profit?
Oh, sure.
I guess is the question.
Five years seems very luxurious for a temporary...
Yeah, right. Otherwise, you're getting...
Yeah, but I think it should be, it should be along with the building permit, if it is indeed part of the building construction, or if you're gonna permit the construction of a pond or something, that, you know, that should be done within no more than a two-year period.
Two or three? Yeah. But it's temporary again, so I think, yeah, two is...
It makes sense to go the duration of the building permit.
Right. So they track each other, so there's no gray area of complication. And then basically, we're saying that just a standalone operation is not allowed in the city. As a new set, just for the purpose of gaining ground.
Well, and so the question, the question would be, is if you had a piece of property and you just were gonna dig the sand out to make a big pond? And that's a non-metallic mine.
Yep.
Or if you, if you had a development property and you're gonna strip the topsoil off of it, but you don't know what you're gonna develop it into yet.
Right.
That's not an accessory use, there's no building permit with it.
Right.
Do you wanna allow that?
And for metallic mine, whether it's permanent or temporary, the issue is what are you gonna use after it? Okay? So, one of the development standards is, as part of a non-metallic mine, five years, there has to be a reuse plan. That says, we're gonna, you know, take out this material and we're gonna use the property for X after that. So that, you know, contemplates that, again, something may not be built during that five-year period. But there's a plan after that for something, so.
Yeah, I guess that does make some sense, but I mean, I can also see if somebody's got two parcels and they're gonna pull sand off of this one to build this one up to build their house, they have a non-metallic mine here, and it's for a purpose. You know, to me, that should be a much shorter duration. Or if someone's gonna strip topsoil back and prep a site on speculation, they could sell it as an industrial parcel or whatever, you know, if after a few years, that topsoil still remains, yeah, it needs to go away.
Right. So, what about three years?
That's fine.
We're going in the opposite direction here.
That's fine. It's not that I want that, I just, I was confused by the five-year, cause if I was understanding it, that we're gonna allow a quarry, five years, no one's gonna do it. But if we're talking about these kinda unique uses and that's what we're saying, all right, we'll allow it, but we're not gonna be encouraging or allowing a full-blown quarry, then three years, I'm fine with that, cause then that further makes that argument. Cause who's gonna invest that type of money and time for a three-year period? Not very many people.
Okay. Okay. Maybe for the last 10 minutes, if we're still good for time, we're gonna shift gears and talk about landscaping. And...
Good time of year to cut the talk.
There's an article that talks about landscaping, what's required, when. And the issue is, are those standards too much? Because basically, again, that's a new set of requirements, and we just wanna make sure it's right-sized. Right? So what Adam did was, he gave us a couple of examples. So this is the one for QuickTrip. So this was approved, right? And what we wanna kinda do is reverse engineer, so to speak, to make sure that the requirements that we have in the code actually, you know, make sense for you. So, there's a buffer yard on the north side, cause apparently he had a butts residential. So the neighbors were concerned about, you know, lights in their yard and traffic and so on and so forth. And then, in the red circles, then there are what we classify in the new code as street trees. So there are 10 of those. And then there's parking lot trees, generally on the perimeter, but there are a couple islands. So, just talking about the buffer yard, I counted up all the, you know, plans and the, you know, the point schedule that we have. And they put in 980 points. Under the code, what would be required is 1140. So the issue, or the question is, did the amount of landscaping that they put in or that you required make sense? Or do you wanna see something more or a little less? In this instance, developer, QuickTrip would come in with this plan and you say, nope, you need to find, you know, 220 points or whatever it is. I don't think it would've been difficult for them to find 220 points, they, you know, they only did, had to do a buffer on two-thirds of their lot.
Right. Yeah, and I think the other thing that was a difference in this situation is this one of the largest single sites for development like this, right? So there's that, so if it were far more compressed, the, I understand the points would scale with that.
Right, yes.
So...
Right, this whole vacant area here.
Yeah, yeah, they're, by their admission, this was probably the, one of the largest, the largest total lots that they've developed on. If I'm not mistaken, if you widen the buffer yard, so it's wider, it's fewer landscaping points.
Yes.
So the other alternative they could've conceivably done in this situation would be to go from a, basically a five-foot, 10-foot wide area, expand it out to 25 feet, for example, and then this amount of landscaping would've been more than sufficient.
Right.
But because of how they wanted it laid out, that's what they want.
And/or is they could've put up a solid, you know, fence?
Which they do have a six-foot vinyl fence that was required along that entire...
Oh.
Which I'm fine with that.
Okay. In that case, I didn't see that. In that case, they have far more, I won't say far more, but what they did meets the current standard.
Okay.
Or the proposed standard.
Okay. So without the fence, they were at about 85, 86%.
Okay.
With the fence, they're way over.
Yep.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Street trees. They've got 10, and they average about 30 points apiece. Okay, so that's 300 points. And the standard is essentially 60 points per 100 feet. So a tree every 50, yeah, a tree ever, every 50 feet. So they've got good street trees on the left side, right side, but along the major arterial there, it's pretty sparse.
Did you miss one?
There is, there's a little something.
Five-inch?
And it may, it may be existing, I'm not sure.
I think those are all existing along that...
Yeah, if they're, if they're five inches in diameter, they're existing.
Okay. Why it's that small?
They're probably ash trees that are removed now, but...
Okay. So in that instance, in order to come up to, you know, standard, they would have to put in some more street trees. So looking at the, you know, the parcel, where it's located, does that make sense?
I think it does. I do think, though, that there are situations, like for example, if for, if along that side of the street, there were power lines.
Yes.
You know, you can be creative and do some low-growth stuff.
And that's what they're gonna have to do on the detention pond, cause there's high voltage power lines up there.
Every easement has recommended street, recommended trees that can go underneath.
Yep. Yeah, so I think that's fine then. So essentially, they put in 300 points, and based on the street fringe, the total would have to be 600. So they would basically double the number of trees.
That'd be hard to do here.
Because of power lines or...
Well, they have that huge vacant lot.
They could do that, but if they, if it weren't a vacant lot, right, I mean, if they were using the entire site, they could run probably another four trees around their detention pond.
I mean, they just opted not to place any of them off of, you know, around their signs and things for probably visibility purposes.
Right. But that would be the logical place for them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there could be one right at that entrance, right turn only, I'd agree.
What's the, what's the sign ordinance there? Is it monument-style signs?
It is, well, we require that, cause it was a conditional use, we required it monument style.
So trees don't bother monument-style signs, cause they get above them.
Yep.
But that's, that's, if you're, if you're talking to a QuickTrip developer, they're pretty, it's pretty common for them to have pole-type signs, which are not compatible with trees. So, you know, that's, that's part of your consideration as far as landscape standards, is, you know, what, what's the aesthetic, what, you know, what's the sign ordinance requirements, things like that? So, you know, that should help you kind of see if this is too restrictive.
But you said they need five, how many more trees? As it turns out, they can get a credit for larger trees that are existing on the site.
Okay.
Because new trees have to be an inch and a half. Okay? So they, they actually get additional points for those larger trees.
Okay.
And I wasn't aware of that, when I was going through this real quick.
Okay.
So, you know, quite honestly, you know, maybe...
Might be all right.
They may be all right, or just, you know, just a couple short.
Yeah, cause they could do, you know, some, you know, a decorative clump or something like that, a couple of birch clumps or something in the vicinity of their, of their sign and a few odds and ends. But if, you know, if that site were fully developed, it might be hard, hard to, you could plant more, it's just that they wouldn't thrive, right? You'd have them 15, 20 feet apart and potentially challenging each other.
So, what I handed out is kind of the worksheet that a developer would go through, or either their engineer, architect, landscape person. So essentially, we're looking at three different kinds of trees or landscaping versus a tree planting, and again, we went through that. They have actually more than 300, but they're required to have 600 against street trees. And then, foundation plantings, essentially tying the building to the ground with plantings around it. And it's based on the perimeter, linear feet of perimeter. Okay? And sometimes this is hard to do, is to have that landscaping, especially when you have an auto-focused kinda land use like this, where it's hard to put landscaping between the parking and the building. So this is kind of, you know, perhaps an extreme example. So they really don't have any foundation plantings per se. So the plantings next to the car wash wouldn't count? Well, that's the other issue that we can talk about. If you look on the layout, they've got trees, they've got shrubs, and then they've got perennials and grasses. Okay? Those are what's around, primarily around the car wash, are those perennials and grasses. So if we were to include those as part of the landscaping requirements, then obviously they would get credit for them. But as it stands now, the landscaping is for woody kinds of stuff.
More permit.
Yeah.
As it were.
And so if they were designing to those standards, if I was a landscape architect designing to those standards, okay, you just switch it up and you put the more woody stuff at the foundation versus the, you know, the perennials and grasses, and you get credit for it. You would, except, again, that particular location, the size that they have, you could plant it there, it's not gonna live for long. I mean, that's, that's not an area where even smaller trees are really gonna thrive. It's only a few feet wide.
Well, and foundation plantings are generally not trees, they're gonna be the shrubs, the bushes, that type of woody vegetation.
Spire, it's just those little bushes. But they still gotta be cognizant of the salt and stuff like that that comes off of the park.
And irrigation, I mean, all those things.
Right. But they, it can be done.
So if they, you know, as Charlie was mentioning, selected different plants, you know, they probably have enough area for 180 points.
Okay.
The other standard is for the parking lot itself, and that's based on, there's a standard for every 10,000 square feet of parking area. They've gotta provide so many points, and the requirement is 480 points. And, you know, I was ballparking a little bit, and they've got 440. So they're, I mean, within one tree. So, all in all, if they were to redesign, select some plants a little bit differently, you know, I mean, this site would work with our current standard, and there's some flexibility as Adam was mentioning, with regard to the buffer yard setbacks and widths and things like that. So there's a lot of things that they can mix and match to make it work. On the other end of the spectrum is asparagus. You look at that landscaping plan, it's just like, great, right? I mean, they just had plants all over the place and it was, you know, the better examples.
Right, and that's, I mean, that's an unusual one, because they probably are at least somewhat close on the parking lot landscaping. What I've generally found is parking lot landscaping seems to be the hardest sell for any business. Number one, it's, it's a fair amount, and number two, it's an inconvenience because of snow plowing, if you don't design it correctly. But asparagus is actually, of course, they also put in a concrete parking lot, and how often do you see people put in a concrete parking lot?
You had to look at a CVS who was well above our standard, right?
I don't remember if I ever found, provided a CVS one, cause that's one that always gets pointed out, and I don't know if it technically meets our, they meet the street tree probably for sure.
But they've got bushes around, they've got, you know, the five-foot mulch, edging, yeah, they're all around the lot. It also means the massing of the building in the parking lot in front, which is a corner lot to us.
So I guess the takeaway is, you know, I think the current standards as applied to this project are doable. So...
It's helpful. I mean, thank you for running it through the calculations. Cause obviously, it's easy to see a number on a page and think, well, landscaping, woo-hoo! And then first person comes in, they've got 100 points and they're required 1,300, well, then that's another debate that we're in.
I mean, are there other hidden consequences? I mean, there will be obviously situations where it's gonna become difficult, especially if you've got stormwater, but that can also probably be, you know, swells and things, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, they've got stormwater here, they've got on-site detention.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, the smaller the site, the less room for landscaping, but then there's still less hard surface, there's still less frontage. I mean, really, it does scale up, it's not a one-size-fit-all.
Which is what I was concerned, you know, this is a large site, that project, and they were able to account all of that in there.
Yeah, the extreme example is, I ran the numbers for the Centralia Center Parking Lot as engineering had drawn up, and the number of trees and landscaping, I think it was a lot. It was like 1,400 points of landscaping in the interior of the lot.
With the current or...
With the proposed layout, and I think what was proposed was about 100. So, because obviously, there wasn't interior landscape islands, there wasn't a lot of trees, there weren't the groupings of bushes and things like that. So, I mean, there is a definite cost and maintenance issue. What's, when you get into, oh, that's a former Walmart parking lot, that's an extremely large parking. And how many people are gonna do that YMCA, obviously? I propose that they have to basically comply with this. That would be good, I guess, little missteps in the future.
Yeah, it's, it's, where we've seen these be really effective is, when somebody comes in and scores 100 and they need 1,400, you know, they can, they could go one of two ways. They could be pissed off, or they could be surprised, you know, at how poor a job they actually did. And typically, most sincere businesspeople are surprised and like, okay, all right, we'll try to get there, you know? And when they try, when they make the attempt, and they get to 1,300 and 1,400 is the standard, you know, then they're close enough to figure it out, you know? But when it's 100, it's, that's, and those are the ones you worry about.
Right.
The people that come in with a plan that says 100, those are the ones you don't want. So...
Yeah, the one tree on the lot.
Right.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, um, QuickTrips, Walgreens, you know, all those chains, you know.
They gotta deal with it. They're already dealing with it.
They say, what do you need? We'll make it work.
Give us the formula.
It's, it's, it's the local developer sometimes, it's just like, you're squeezing me, you're, you know, being mean to me, you're not, you know, friendly for businesses. So, so, yeah, I mean, it, it's run the, the gamut from, from that to national chains, and they're like, I'll split the lot.
And, and, and not to be offensive to anybody, but typically, the worst are you, are your municipal public works directors.
Trying.
But that's, that's why we, that's why we wanted to run the, they run the Centralia lot. Did you, did you calculate all the, uh, existing street trees around it in the formula?
To an extent, yeah, I did do the math on far as, the street trees, I think you were fairly close, it was the interior landscaping that was the issue.
And, and, and you had, what was the number you calculated?
I don't remember, 100, I, it was not, it was the interior parking that was the issue.
Sure.
And that was where it was like 100 versus the required 100, because just the sheer square footage of the paved area.
Yeah.
And it was a lot of it. But on the street trees and the periphery, I think you were pretty close, but again, it required a lot, 'cause there's a lot of periphery.
So does this criteria, it doesn't follow through in the same ratio when we go into the different, like, the M1 district or whatever, right?
You can set it up that way.
Well, I know in the past, when like, when we were over by, uh, the G, G and K or industrial park, where they were redoing something, and I know we said, well, we want you to have a tree here, and a tree here, and a tree here, and that was about it, you know?
It was based on parking spaces, I think it was one tree per eight spots or something like that, it was kind of just the generic, but that was without having any sort of code and just.
Winging it.
Yeah.
Winging.
Without scaring.
Without saying, well, what will you do?
That's all we had. Any other questions or discussion before we adjourn?
Next meeting date?
It's December 11th.
Christmas.
Yep. December 11th, then, is the Christmas season.
Well, our next normal one is December 11th. So the next one on our normal schedule would be the, would be the third Monday.
Does that work?
Looks good.
Okay. Um. So depending on how things go, we'll have the revised future land use map, we'll have, um, everything that we talked about here built into the, the current draft, and you'll get a draft from first page to last page as a single document, and you're gonna have to insert pages or be confused about what goes where.
So all of that will just be reset, you'll get a whole brand-new one, right?
And it will be bound to say, this is almost, almost final. So, okay?
Christmas present.
That and the council, right, so they're chewing on all this.
Yeah, so that's probably the draft that we're considering getting to the, before we give a whole type of discussion, right?
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? So, who?
Second.
Second on paper. All right, adjourn.